City of Lincoln City, special city council meeting for Monday, October 1st, 2018. It's 5:00 PM with counsel, well, I guess I'll do a little call to order. With council's approval, can we suspend the pledge of allegiance tonight?
Sure.
No objection? Okay, great. Roll call, please.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Dick Anderson.
Yes.
Riley Hoagland. Deanna Hinton, she's excused. Judy Casper.
Here.
And Susan Walkie.
Yes.
All right, we'll roll straight into comments from citizens present. I don't have a sign up sheet, so raise your hand. Are you the first on the list? Okay, well, Mr. Hoover.
Mayor Williams, member of this council. My name is Jim Hoover. I'm a property owner in the city of Lincoln City. First of all, I'd like to speak tonight, in my time here, about your declaration of an emergency, and then later, hopefully, I get a chance to talk about your actual ordinance. I had a chance to review your council packet. It's still online, for anybody that's watching this on TV. On page five, you have a statement that the, I'm on page five of the council packet, not page five, page five, says, "Whereas the city managers received at least one complaint concerning the city's regulations concerning temporary political signing, council desires to immediately take action to avoid any legal challenge and address any deficiencies by enacting an emergency ordinance to clarify content-neutral temporary sign limitations." I've had the opportunity to look through your packet more. If you'll go to page 10 of the packet, page 10 of the packet, it talks about what constitutes an emergency, and you quote in page 10 of the packet, it says, "Lincoln City Charter expressly authorizes the city council to adopt an emergency ordinance for the immediate preservation of public peace, health, and safety." I spent as much time and put as much effort into as I could to figure out how the wording of avoiding litigation falls into the category of public peace, health, or safety, and I don't see that. And then when I went down three more lines, this is on line 28, for anybody watching, if you want to follow along, 27, 28, it says, "The city of Lincoln City finds it is necessary for immediate preservation of public peace, health, and safety," and then, coincidentally, we've added the word "welfare," and I couldn't find anywhere where welfare occurred in the city charter or the city ordinances, but maybe that's how we're trying to slip in this legal action, is for the welfare of the city of Lincoln City, not necessarily for public peace, which involves citizens, public health, which involves citizens, and public safety, which involves citizens. The, if you look at page nine of the packet, going back one page, the bottom of the page, on line 34, it talks about inconsistent provisions and savings. It says, "This ordinance shall supersede and control all their inconsistent provisions, currently under review by the Planning Commission." And I find it really incredible, because I went back and looked through the city meeting records, and I can't find anywhere where there's been a Planning Commission meeting since this was discussed a week ago at the city council meeting. And so I think to represent to the public that this is being done for an emergency for public safety, public health, or public welfare, and then to state that it's being reviewed by the Planning Commission, is a misrepresentation of this entire process and the review that's been under, because not only has it not been looked at by citizens for more than a week, but it hasn't been presented to the Planning Commission, another body that's there to represent citizens' interests by words, and so that's the next thing. And then the last one, for people watching, or for you as counselors, the state of Oregon has a process, it's called a referendum and an initiative process. It varies, because a referendum process allows a citizen or groups of citizens to actually bring an ordinance or a law at the state level or the local level to a vote of the people if they collect enough signatures to refer it to the people, and they have 30 days to do that. So that's why, if you're wondering, most ordinances take 30 days to become law, is because the state of Oregon has afforded people that opportunity. That's been adopted by the city of Lincoln City. It's actually part of the municipal code. They, in fact, adopted the Oregon Revised Statutes, word for word. It just referenced in the code as Oregon Revised Statutes. And so by holding an emergency when it's not an emergency, by not taking it to the Planning Commission, and by doing this in less than a week, you pretty much circumvented every opportunity the general public has to, A, give input, and then, B, take that input, discuss it, and decide whether or not they want to collect signatures and get it referred to the voters of the state of Oregon before it comes law. And you're being asked tonight whether or not you want to make this an emergency, have a first and second reading, and have it become effective immediately. So as a property owner in the city of Lincoln City, as a person who is active in politics, I would like to ask you to consider this something that is a non-emergency. It doesn't clarify anything. It doesn't remove any of the existing verbiage from the ordinance, which, as Richard Townsend said, is rife with constitutional violations of freedom of speech. That's your planning director's own words. It doesn't cross out any lines in the existing municipal code. It doesn't change any wording in the municipal code. It just adds another layer of wording that I find very hard to believe would in any way make it clarified for an individual who's trying to decide whether or not they have the right to put up a political sign or have a sign with any content up any time during the year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else? I don't have anyone else signed up, but like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we move on. Okay, we are at ordinances, ordinance 2018-13, an ordinance for the city, of the city of Lincoln City, meaning the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title IX, Public Peace, Morals, and Welfare, adding a new chapter, 9.34 signage, and declaring an emergency. Before we roll into that, because I'm concerned that, once we get started on this, it's just going to be a motion-bam discussion, and we're out the door, and I want to have a couple things to say on this. I have a very good amount to say on this. I share the concerns of many people who I've spoken to this week about the idea that we're declaring an emergency. So, of course, I have to go back to my dictionary and say, "What's an emergency?" Webster says, "It's an unforeseen combination of circumstances of the resulting state that calls for immediate action, or an urgent need for assistance or relief." I don't see any of that in this issue. I've been presented with an ordinance that says, "Because someone has threatened a lawsuit because of our enforcement of an ordinance, we have to declare an emergency and bypass the referendum. We have to bypass this, that, and the other." Whereas if we just didn't enforce it, we wouldn't have a threat of a lawsuit. As to disturbing the peace, I've looked that up, the legal sense, in the legal sense, disturbing the peace or public peace. The broadest sense is the term is synonymous with crime itself. It means an indictable offense. There's none here. More common sense includes that crimes are punishable primarily because of their disruptive effect upon the peace and security of the community. There's no threat to the peace or security. Among these are unlawful assembly, riot, forced entry and detainer, disturbance, sorry, wife is calling. Stop it. Forced entry and detainer, disturbance of a public assembly, keeping a disorderly house, malicious mischief. Third is a willful conduct that does not within the definition, does not fall within the definition of any other specific crime, but that unreasonably disrupts the public tranquility or has a strong tendency to cause a disturbance. Doesn't fall into that, in my humble opinion. As I go through this ordinance, again, I go back to, "The city managers received at least one complaint concerning the city's regulation concerning temporary political signage. Council desires to take immediate action to avoid any legal challenge." Well, that isn't going to change that. If someone says they're going to sue because of what we've done in the past, changing an ordinance today is not going to affect that. I'm curious about, under 9.34.70, general standards, conditions, and limitations, this chapter authorizes only temporary signs. A temporary sign is a sign which is intended to be displayed for a fixed period of time and then be removed. A temporary sign is not affixed to a permanent sign structure, to any building or structure. So are we saying that if you tack it to a building, that's in violation? If someone says, "I want, I don't have a place to put a sign in my yard, but I got to put it on my house. I'm going to put it on my carport. I'm going to put it on my garage." The welfare, so that, the enforcement. So I think all that I really, that I gather out of this is, I don't see an emergency, which I think will be challengeable. I forwarded to you, I think, to Ron, did you get that forward that I sent you? Okay, "From the International Municipal Lawyers Association," granted, it's from 2008, "Sign Wars, the First Amendment and Political Signs," and then another, "From the International Municipal Lawyers Association from 2014, Sign Regulations on the First Amendment, Navigating Developments in the Law." From the first, the International Municipal Lawyer says, "Political signs constitute political protected speech under the First Amendment. In fact, the First Amendment has its fullest and most complete application to political speech. Political signs constitute a decidedly unique and historical medium that may have no practical substitute." And I'm going to be brief on these. And number three, Regulation of Political Signs: Content-Based Restrictions. The regulation of only political signs is the most difficult type of sign regulation to draft and defend, because content-based regulations are deemed presumptively invalid and must be able to survive a strict scrutiny analysis. Durational limits. Do not draft a municipal ordinance that sets a time limit on when political signs can be posted, especially if the limitation period is tied to an election date. Numerous courts have struck down such regulations, and court challenges are pending in several states. In Witten versus the city of Gladstone, the Eighth Circuit held unconstitutional municipal ordinance which limited the posting of political signs to 30 days prior and seven days after the date of the election which the sign pertained." It goes on. Political signs placed along streets to be removed is fine. That's a city issue, public property. Given these obstacles, it's a rare occasion for a court to approve a content-based sign ordinance, as it goes on. Favouring one non-commercial message, in striking down this, grieve, sorry, it's chaos time at my stores. I apologize. In striking down this ordinance, the Supreme Court held that the First Amendment does not allow municipalities to distinguish between relative value of different categories of non-commercial speech. Your sign ordinance should favor neither commercial signs nor other non-commercial signs over political signs. And then, under content-neutral restrictions, it says, "Be justified without, in order to pass constitutional muster," in order to pass constitutional muster, content-neutral sign regulations must, one, be justified without reference to the content, be narrowly tailored to service specific governmental interest, and leave open, ample, alternative channels for communicating the message, since a private citizen's interest in controlling use of his or her own property justifies disparate treatment when it comes to signs." Anyway, it goes on and on and on and on and on, basically saying, I'm going to read the very last part. Private property. On private property, you cannot prohibit all temporary signs. In a content-neutral manner, you can limit the size of yard signs, both individually and by total square footage. You can place reasonable restrictions on shape, height, spacing, condition, and composition. You can place reasonable restrictions on the location of temporary signs, especially if they interfere with public safety. You may be able to place reasonable restrictions on the illumination of temporary signs, and you might be able to place some reasonable limitation on the duration of temporary signs that is not tied to election dates. And their final page, it said, "Every sign ordinance should avoid sign placement being conditioned upon the unreviewed, unlimited, or discretionary approval, discretionary approval of a municipal office or a body." And it goes on and on. And anyway, you have these in your packet. I think we're just stepping into something that we, that requires more reflection, more time, more input, and I don't see how any of this rises to the level of an emergency by definition or any court proceeding that I've read. So that's my speech for tonight, folks. I will be voting no on this.
Mr. Mayor, just a point of reference, I don't have those in my packet, so I don't know where you-
I apologize. I pour those to Ron to forward.
They were sent to you in an email today, after I received them from the mayor. They were not as part of the packet, because the packet had already been published.
I received them late today, too, or assembled them late today. I'd be happy to share those with you. So that's what I have to say. So the ordinance, I guess, Mr. Appicello, if you want to read, or if someone else wants to speak on this matter?
I'd like to wait until there's a motion before I speak about it.
Well, I think it'd be appropriate to have Mr. Appicello just discuss, give us, give the people of the city an overview of what we're going to be making a motion on.
Okay, council, a week ago, I gave the council an ordinance, actually, that's not true. It was the Friday before last Monday. I emailed to council a proposed ordinance, and that ordinance only really had one section, and that was going to amend the, what exactly a political sign was. We were getting rid of the content-based description, and so you did not add that to the agenda, so we set this special meeting. I went back, and I added some more details to the ordinance. I used the model sign code from the International Municipal Lawyers Association and just borrowed language from them, and I took some of the language that we had, and I reworked it to be more content-neutral. So there are a couple just corrections in the document that you have, and this was, the packet was posted last Friday. There's a couple periods missing in the small caption sections, and there's some yellow highlighting that's mysteriously reappeared, which needs to be removed. And missing is the section 934-080, which simply said "reserved," and that's on page two of the ordinance. On page three of the ordinance, government signs, signs should be capitalized. Then it says, "Government sign is a sigh instead of sign," so that needs to be corrected, typo. Under snipe sign, it says a snipe, it should say, "Snipe sign," period, "A snipe sign" means, and then continue with the definition. Vehicle sign, sign should be capitalized. Temporary signage exempt from land use permitting. There should be a period at the end of that. The mayor pointed out that in 070A, it says, "Not affixed to a permanent sign structure or," it should, it should say, "or requiring a land use approval or any type of building permit," so the language "to any building or structure" should be removed. So, yeah, could you, I missed it. In A, you said? It's 934-070A, and the fourth line down, the words "to any building or structure" should be stricken, so it would read, "A temporary sign is not affixed to a permanent sign structure or," yeah, "permanent sign structure requiring a land use approval or any type of building permit." So the word "or" is also removed.
Okay.
I was asked earlier about the prohibition on signs on undeveloped lots, and so the next section, B, and there's no change here, but does not include a prohibition on signs on undeveloped lots. So the current code says, you know, certain signs are exempt, but then says, "Subject to the appropriate provisions of this article, which includes the prohibited signs, which includes signs on undeveloped lots." In talking to Richard about whether or not for temporary signs, we need that prohibition, he agreed we don't. So, again, that's a land use rationale. Signs are accessory, and so having a prohibition that says you can't have a permanent sign is the only thing on your lot, that makes sense, because signs are accessory, but when you have temporary signage, they're going to go away, there's no sense in applying that prohibition to temporary signs. So that's why it's not listed there, and Mr. Rick Mark had asked me about that, so I wanted to point that out. The word "reserved" in 934-090 is, should be stricken, because that section is supposed to be titled Violation, Penalty, and Abatement, period at the end of the sentence, and then the 934-090A, second to last line, has "the permitting authority," and then it says "the city," the words "the city" needs to be stricken, because it could be another permitting authority, and it's a Class A violation with a capital C, and you can decide to make it a Class B.
I'm sorry, you lost me. I got 934-09, you said the last line of what? A, B, C, D?
First line of A.
First line of A.
Last line of A.
Last line of A.
There's a capital C for class, and then the line just above, it says, "Permitting authority, the city," but should just say permitting authority, so strike the words "the city," second to last line, paragraph A, page six, 934-090.
Okay.
So those are the changes, so if you are to move to first reading, you would approve with the changes as read. It sounds like the mayor does not agree that this constitutes an emergency. I believe that it is an emergency when you have problems with your ordinance that people are alleging are constitutional deficiencies. I want to clarify that at the last council meeting, a gentleman gave, under the topics from the public, and he stated that our ordinance was politically, political signs were being treated less favorably than real estate signs, and therefore, political signs should be able to be as big as they want them to be, and actually, that's not the problem with our sign ordinance. The problem with our sign ordinance is, it says, the definition of a temporary political sign includes a discussion of the content, and it says, "The content is, it has to concern a candidate on this election or a measure on this election." That's the problem, because if you want to put up a sign in your yard that just says, "I like beer," or whatever it is today that you want to talk about, you're not, you're discriminated against by that content-based language. So the allegation at the last meeting was that, while we're treating real estate signs more favorably, actually, the provision of the ordinance says that you are allowed to have up to a 32-square-foot sign on certain properties if your property is up for sale. It does not say what the content of the sign is. It is actually a content-neutral provision. So you don't see the relationship of having people bounded, they can't have small signs that talk about things other than the current election. That's the problem, and that's what we're trying to fix. And when the manager told me that we had a complaint about the sign ordinance, I assumed that, since Richard and I had talked about, that's what we needed to fix, that that was the problem we were talking about. It was not related to the size or duration of the signs. Now, it is true that you can't be too short in your duration, and the International Municipal Lawyers Association says, "30 days is too little. We have 60 days." They believe that's defensible. And I think that what I've proposed here is simply taking from the International Municipal Lawyers Association a couple additional temporary signs, in addition to signs that are posted during the political season. So the language that Richard and I had discussed about political signs was just simply, you're allowed to have a temporary sign during the period of time when elections are occurring. Your sign can say whatever you want. There's no content restriction. Other signs that can be allowed are the aforementioned sign when your property is for sale. You can have a sign when your property is for sale. On residential property, it's going to be smaller than on commercial property, but we're not going to tell you what the content is. The International Municipal Lawyers Association recommends that you have a small sign allowance, all, that people are allowed to have signs all the time. We had something similar. We do have something similar. It's two square feet, but we have like a requirement that you can only have it for twice a year, for 60 days or something like that, so it's a total 120 days. I suggested, and Richard seemed to agree, that there's no point on putting a time limitation on it. It's two square feet. You can have a two-square-foot sign all year long. It can say whatever you want it to say. No content limitation. Sign in a window, signs in windows are generally not regulated, but we want to just clarify, if you wanted to have a sign in your window and it faces the right-of-way, it's okay, as long as it doesn't exceed the size limitation that's here. That's allowed all the time. So another content-based problem, since although it wasn't something that anybody came in and complained to Mr. Chandler about, was the calling a garage sale sign, or, you know, if you, it's almost like the labels are what gets you in trouble. So we simply described, if you're going to engage in a sale, you're going to be having a sale, you can put out signage. You know what? Your sign does not have to, have to deal with the sale, but you have to take it down after the sale's over, but there's no limitation on content. And I think that's about it in terms of what signs, we don't really want to tell you what this content of the sign will be, but those are the situations under which you can have a sign. And again, I took those from the International Municipal Lawyers draft. I reworked them to make them kind of consistent with our code. There's a general prohibition that says you can't have temporary signs, except as allowed in here, but if you got a permit for a temporary banner or something under the existing regulations, that permit's good until it says it's over, or a year, whatever occurs first. The general standards, the mayor pointed out the issue with paragraph A, thank you, that was just a mistake in the typing. The B, important thing to note, under B, is that undeveloped lots are not prohibited from having temporary signs. The other thing to note is that snipe signs are an actual defined term. It's where you go and you take your sign and you put it on somebody else's thing. So you have a telephone pole on your property and you go plaster signs on it, that's called a snipe sign. It's that's the only difference.
Sounds sketchy.
Our code had previously just referred to that as, "No trees on vegetation, no trees on natural features," that kind of stuff, but it's more generically referred to by the municipal lawyers as a snipe sign. As before, you can't put signs in the right-of-way. I did say that you can't violate state or federal law, there's some things you just can't put out there under state or federal law, but I didn't attempt to put those in. Also, this ordinance doesn't authorize signs where the state or feds would prohibit you or require you to get a permit. Some scenic areas and things like that have special regulations, and you need to follow them, and we're not excusing you. If you get a permit from us, you may also need a permit from them. The violation section is fairly straightforward and consistent with other sections of your code. Again, the inconsistent provision section just says, "Hey, this will control over any inconsistent provisions on temporary signs," and Richard has talked to the Planning Commission, not in a public hearing, but at least once prior to tomorrow night's meeting. Tomorrow night, he's going to be talking to them again about the sign ordinance. And this sign permit, if you have one now, it's good for as long as it says, or a year, whichever comes first. If the council's not going to unanimously declare an emergency, then I'll have to read section five and ask that it be deleted, and section six will need to change to say it takes effect within 30 days. So with that, I'll, I don't know if you want to do, you want to ask the question about the emergency first?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
May I add just a little bit of history onto this, and why this is before you under an emergency, or as a fast track to go forward? I've been through many-
It's two different things, though. Okay.
I've been through many elections, okay? Always as a staff person, but I've been through many elections. It's never a good thing, well, first of all, staff is always putting, is put into a position of enforcing the sign ordinance, and it's the candidates that request the cities, or the staff enforce the sign ordinance. This election is no different. I've received requests by the various candidates to make sure that we are enforcing our ordinance as it pertains to the signs. It's always a difficult position for staff to be in, because we don't want to become a factor in the election. The election needs to be about the candidates. It needs to be about the positions, and they need to vigorously argue why they are the best people to be elected, and then the electorate does their thing and chooses the people they want to represent them. So it's something that I'm always keen on, is to try to make sure that the enforcement of the sign ordinance is not a factor in the election. As I became aware that there was a, there was a problem with our ordinances, I talked with Mr. Appicello and Mr. Townsend. We discussed, we found that there was some validity to the concerns that were expressed on these ordinances, and so I authorized Mr. Appicello to go forward and put this together. Now, the reason why it's on the fast track, which in our case we deem as an emergency, is simply time. You're in an election, okay? The election is going to be over in approximately six, five weeks now, and we do not want to have the staff as the enforcement of the ordinance of, and especially if there's problems with our existing ordinance, to become an issue in the election. Again, going over on how we have applied emergency ordinances in the past, how our language is spelled out in the charter, and on what constitutes an emergency. I think it's, we can make a pretty fair case that this constitutes what would be an emergency to put this on a fast track, so that it can be dealt with, so that the election can go forward, dealing with the candidates and their positions, and the electorate, and who they're going to choose, and so that the enforcement of our ordinance, which we will do for the next five weeks, will not be an issue in the election. So that's why I authorized that we go forward with the development of this ordinance and the development of it as an emergency ordinance.
Thank you. And I just want to clarify my position. I'm not here to argue the particulars of a sign ordinance. I think that's a great discussion to have during a meeting. I'm not even going to discuss that. My concern is the emergency. So as I read from my packet, section five, Emergency Declaration- So, as I read from my packet, section five, emergency declaration. The Lincoln City Charter, chapter nine, section 9.3 expressly authorizes the city council to adopt an emergency ordinance for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, or safety upon making a statement declaring the basis of an emergency. I don't think anything, I don't see anything that says time sensitivity. I don't see anything that says because it's a pain in the rear. This is not public peace, this is not health, and this is not safety. So, that's, that's the end of my stumping. I don't believe this is emergency. I don't think it rise, we have many more issues that rise to the level of emergency in this city right now than this. So, there we go. So, we've had it. Anyone want to make their motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Or talk? Yeah.
We've done the reading, so the first question I'd ask you to take up is the emergency, because that would need to be unanimous, so.
But I'm not making the motion. I just have a question, if we could ask, council. One of the questions I had was what actually happens in those 30 days between an ordinance approved and usually comes into, to play? It's, we've certainly heard opinions.
Yeah, the, I mean, if you amend the ordinance to reflect content neutrality that we're trying to achieve here in order to not allow the election to be disrupted.
No, let me, let me, I'm not making myself clear, I guess. Forget this ordinance. Any ordinance that we pass comes effective 30 days later. So, what I'm curious about by if, if an emergency clause comes into play and it becomes effective immediately, what are, what normally happens during the 30 days before any ordinance becomes effective? Is there an appeal process? Is there an aging effect of a ordinance? It needs to get retyped and digitized? You know, what, what are we bypassing in a 30-day?
I think the most important thing is that it's effective immediately. So, and it needs to be signed, okay? That, that's usually required. Somebody's got to sign it, the presiding officer or the second, the vice chair or whatever. Needs to be signed, and, and that's generally what happens in the 30 days after the second reading. We try to put it onto the website under current ordinances. We send it off to Code Publishing. It's really, and, and yeah, there can be referendums of adopted ordinances, and those occur. They can occur, but that's not going to stop if it's an emergency ordinance, if it's a, there could be a referendum. So, I, again, we're just trying to address content neutrality. If you don't unanimously agree that it's an emergency, then it will not be an emergency. It will be first reading. If that's unanimous, we will do, we can do second reading tonight. It won't be an emergency ordinance. It'll still simply be effective 30 days after second reading. If you are not unanimous on first reading, the second reading will be on October 8th. But I guess because I have to read any changes, if you decide that it's not an emergency, I'll have to read the emergency section and say, let's delete this and let's change the effective date. So, practically, I need to know whether or not you're going to agree to an emergency. I'm guessing it's not going to be unanimous, so.
Council, Walkie has a question.
If, if the city is facing a threat of litigation and it's the council's duty to help protect the city, would an emergency play into that?
Yes, and I guess I want to point out that the charter doesn't have the language, that's kind of like generic boilerplate emergency language that, that we all use when we adopt emergency ordinances. 9.3 of the charter simply talks about an ordinance adopted to meet an emergency may take effect as soon as it's, it is adopted or on some other date specified in the ordinance. So, the, the stuff that you see in here about emergency, that's kind of what we all use in the convention of writing these ordinances. So, I do think it is important to defend the city from frivolous litigation, so. If it's not unanimous, we don't have an emergency, so.
Well, and while I, I'm sorry, you were, you said on the floor.
Well, if we're going to talk, I, I don't have anything else to say about emergency. I just have a lot of comments, so.
Well, my, my question, though, is, okay, this threat of litigation is in response to an enforcement that's already occurred, is my understanding. Changing this ordinance is not going to change that threat or the enforcement action, correct? It's, it's already something done, that the door's open. Whether we change this ordinance now or not has no effect on that.
Well, again, I identified what we believe the problem with the ordinance is. That is not what the complaint turned out to be about. I don't think the complaint was correct because the complaint was talking about real estate signs, and we don't have anything that's a real estate sign exemption. We have a allowance that if your property is for sale, you can have a 32-square-foot sign. That doesn't tell you that the sign has to be about real estate, and so it could be about political things. So, the fact of the matter is, is that's, that's not what the appropriate complaint was about. The complaint should have been about the content, lack of content neutrality for the exempt sign provision, and that's what we're trying to fix. Now, if, if someone thinks they were wrong, that, you're right, there's no way we can change that, and we'll deal with that in due course. But people can certainly hear that, oh, well, there's no, no sign regulations in Lincoln City. Let's go nuts. And I'm not kidding, that's where the public health and the threat to the public safety is, that people are just going to think, there are no rules, just do whatever you want. And that could be signs out there in the clear vision area, and signs in the right-of-way, and, you know, dogs and cats living together, fire and brimstone, end of the world type stuff. So, I always quote Bill Murray when possible, okay? The, the fact of the matter is, that's, that's the position. Are we, are we going to have regulations or not? And all we are, all we're trying to do was address content neutrality with regard to political signs.
I had no idea we'd get so biblical here.
I've got a few questions. I don't, I didn't catch, when you were talking about typos, the very top of line five of, or page five of the ordinance, packet page eight, it says, "Sale or lease and," I think it should be "and."
Yes, it should say "and."
And then, at the bottom of that same page, paragraph D, there's a semicolon, then there's a hyphen. I definitely don't need both of them.
Yeah, the hyphen should be removed.
Okay. My other questions are the definition of a vehicle sign. Any sign attached to or displayed on any type of vehicle or trailer? Well, there are lots of vehicles who go through this town with signs on them. I don't understand how we can prohibit that.
Hold on a second, I'll see what I, I must have left off some language.
Thank you.
I know we have something in our code that says when the vehicle is parked for purposes of displaying a message, and I just don't know where it is. Yeah, I don't think it's in the definition. There's no vehicle. The language I had left off is where the apparent purpose is to display the sign. So, what it actually says in our code is signs placed on or affixed to vehicles and/or trailers which are parked on a public right-of-way, public property or private property so as to be visible from a public right-of-way where the apparent purpose is to display the sign. So, I'd ask that we add that language to the definition of sign and call it prohibited vehicle sign.
Thank you, thank you. I had a question about the restriction on real estate signs, though it doesn't say they're real estate signs. The top of page five of the ordinance, it, it says they must be removed the day after the property sale or lease is completed. I'm wondering if that's a shorter time period than we currently have? Is that what we have now? I haven't seen signs disappear that fast.
I want to speak to that just briefly. Many of these are placed by signed companies, and so you, once the property is closed, not necessarily sold, but closed, then you would call the company and say, you need to remove that sign.
Yeah, it doesn't.
You know, how quick can they get to it? And it depends on how much business they're doing, and especially in a county like ours, they could be traveling from Tillamook to Newport or Waldport. So, yeah, it's too short a time.
I'm thinking five days or seven days or even 10 days could be more realistic.
And, and I'm, I think that the, I'm not sure that the existing code addresses the exact time, but if you want to specify more days, it's up to you.
And that should be a business day, I think, in, in that sense.
So, seven business days? Is that?
Well, 10 business days.
And, and business days.
That's what I think.
Yeah, and this reminds, oh, I'm sorry.
And the, the other item I had a question about is in section two, and it refers to any temporary sign permit issued. Well, I didn't think there were temporary sign permits issued.
Yeah, there's a temporary banner sign, I believe, permit. There's, there are a couple.
There are some, okay.
And so, anybody that's got one will not have it revoked by the adoption of this ordinance. It's a savings clause.
Okay, thank you.
So, the language you want to change would now say, offered for sale or lease and must be removed 10 business days after the property sale or lease is completed. Is that acceptable?
Is with me.
Ooh, kind of a dumb question, just kind of popped in my head since you said the word banner. Banners at the parks, at curtsies, paid, paid advertising on the chain-link fences. Or does that fall into this?
Well, I did not address government signs, and I, so that sign is a specific exemption in our current ordinance. I don't know. I didn't, I didn't address it.
The advertising in ball fields and such? Okay.
I don't know if we can call that a government sign since it's on government property pursuant to what I assume is a franchise.
In our current code, it's exempted.
Yes.
As an athletic field sign.
Okay.
And usually, they're not regulated if they don't face a right-of-way.
You know, this kind of just reminds me a little bit when we were talking, gosh, way back when, I think I was still on planning, the flashing sign discussion, where there was the talk about how often could a sign change, and would we allow flashing lights, this, that, and the other? And that was rightly brought up, I think, as a discussion of public safety, and, and it was addressed as, you know, as a distraction. And that would rise more to a level of an emergency than this does. A static sign, I, I'm, I'm just stymied by, by the idea that this is an emergency. It doesn't meet any definition in, that I've read, written down anywhere in any book that says, here's the definition. It, nah, I beat that dead horse. I'm done.
So, if, if you want to, I guess, I think it's pretty clear we're not going to get a declaration of emergency, so I'm going to read the section on emergency so that you can agree to remove it. An election is scheduled for November 6, 2018. Challenges to city regulations concerning signage can be costly and unnecessarily distract from important city business. The city manager has been warned of possible sign litigation. To avoid unnecessary litigation, the council desires to clarify the content neutrality of sign regulations during election periods. City Charter, chapter nine, section 9.3 expressly authorizes the city council to adopt an emergency ordinance for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, or safety upon making a statement declaring the basis of the emergency. Council finds and determines that conditions in the city of Lincoln City are such that this ordinance is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, and welfare. An emergency is declared to exist specifically because the impending election has resulted in threats of litigation over signage regulations. The immediate effectiveness of this ordinance will clarify content neutrality as regards election time signage. Therefore, pursuant to the city charter, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately upon passage of this and signature. So, that's in section five, emergency declaration. That section would be eliminated, and the new section five would be ordinance effective date pursuant to article nine, section 9.2, I believe. Hold on.
Point three.
I, I know it says point three, but the, that's the emergency provision. Pursuant to chapter nine, 9.3, this ordinance takes effect on the 30th day after its adoption. And then, the codification would only be changed to reflect sections two through six instead of two through seven, and the dates would correspond to hopefully first reading today, and then second reading would be changed, so.
Mr. Apicello?
Yes.
Would section five be eliminated so that ordinance effective date would become section five?
The new section five. Codification would become the new section six.
So.
And therefore, the sections to be codified would be, don't need not be codified, are two through six.
Thank you.
So, this is first reading of, well, this is first reading of ordinance number 2018-13, an ordinance of the city of Lincoln City amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code, title nine, Public Peace, Morals, and Welfare, adding a new chapter, 9.34, signage and declaring, well, and striking the words, and declaring an emergency. Ask for approval of first reading.
I move to approve first reading of ordinance 2018-13.
With the changes as read.
With the changes as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion? Well, not the time for public discussion. Let's, should an ordinance roll call, please?
Hoagland?
Yes.
Hint, hint, she's gone. Casper?
Yes.
Walkie?
Yes.
Williams?
No.
And Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Your honor, counsel, this ordinance will be on for second reading on the October 8th meeting.
Thank you very much. There's nothing else on the agenda? Anything for the public good?
I spent three days in Eugene at the League of Oregon Cities Conference, and I'm excited to share some of the things that I learned, and I will do that at a later date.
Excellent. Anyone else? Oh, Mr. Apicello?
I, I just wanted to say I was at the attorney conference on Friday, and there was a great deal of material on the homeless issues, so I'll forward that material to council. I know we're going to talk about homelessness on the 15th, I believe.
And I'm going to just add one last thing here, is, and I want to make sure I'm really clear. I appreciate Mr. Chandler bringing this forward. I appreciate you, Mr. Apicello, constructing this on a short-time basis. I'm not critical of either of you or this process, of this process. I'm not critical of either of you or this process of that. I just have a disagreement with the declaration of the emergency. I know that you had a tough task presented to you on a short timeframe, so thank you both for doing that. Anything else? Mr. Anderson?
Mr. Mayor, as you and council may know, the entire council has been challenged with another ethics complaint. Under confidentiality limited disclosure, I'd request that the staff be authorized to send or release executive session tapes, so named in that complaint, to legal counsel that's, or respective city counselors, and if necessary, to the Ethics Commission.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
A second?
Motion to second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm sorry, hearing none, motion carries. Anything else? All right. May God bless you all, may God bless Lincoln City. We are adjourned. That's mine, that's mine. That's not mine.